Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the two-seat December 2nd, 2025 meeting of Denton County Commissioners' Court. We're glad to have you all here with us today. At this time, I'd like to welcome Julie Haidock, our Assistant Director of Human Resources. She's going to lead us in our invocation. Our pledges will be led by Eric Gilderslieb and our county administration. If you'll please stand, I do want to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones. Thank you.
Good morning. Please bow your heads. Our Heavenly Father, thank you for the pauses in our lives that allow us to celebrate family, friends, and the gifts you provide. We are unworthy, but yet so grateful that you do not bestow blessings on us based on our achievements or our merits, but rather as an outpouring of the unconditional love you have for your children. As we enter this season and prepare to celebrate the Savior's birth, let us remember to take time among the hustle and bustle of December. Help us slow down and reflect on the real meaning of Christmas. During this first week of Advent, we focus on the hope that only comes through believing that you came to the world to save us from our own agendas and to offer the way to eternal life. Hope in the certainty of knowing that you will one day come again to restore order to your kingdom. Until then, Lord, we ask that you be with us. Grant us wisdom and help us walk out our lives in accordance with your will. Let us find hope in your promises. As you tell us in Romans 15, verse 13, "May the God of hope fill you with all joy and peace as you trust in him, so that you may overflow with hope by the power of the Holy Spirit." Emmanuel, he is with us. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in our pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Well, thank you, Julie, and thank you, Eric. We appreciate it. We do have a couple people registered this morning to, for item number one, for public input, for items not listed on the agenda. And our first registered speaker is LaCobra Wolf. Good morning.
Good morning.
And I would remind you that our public comments are limited to three minutes, okay?
Yes, nowhere.
All right, and I'll go ahead and set a timer for you. All right, go right ahead.
All right. My name is LaCobra Wolf, a resident of Corinth, Texas, and I just wanted to express my concerns in regards to Span's Meals on Wheels of Denton County. They're a crucial part of our community, and I believe that the court should have key information to ensure that this program and their leadership are good stewards of the funding. Recent events suggest mismanagement of funds, which has negatively impacted the residents and erodes the public's trust. Additionally, I'm concerned that seniors will be placed again on a waiting list due to this mismanagement. I urge someone to perform a deep dive in staff turnover, layoffs, while certain management receives bonuses and raises. I also urge you guys to look at the Board of Directors and their lack of oversight and how the program is being managed while allowing personal interests for financial gain to be the, their catalyst. I appreciate you guys for allowing me the time to speak. It's very intimidating, anyway.
Don't feel that way.
Yeah, I just want to bring awareness. I love that program. It's near and dear to my heart, and I just hope somebody really takes a strong look at it. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your comments.
I do, and I have already sent it to Eric as well, and I'm just waiting. That's why I'm following up in public comments.
Yep.
Yes, ma'am. Appreciate it.
All right, next is Gordon Jones. Good morning, sir. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. My name is Gordon Jones. I live in Double Oak, Texas, 305 Oak Trail Drive, here for the intersection of 1830 and Ryan Road. I'm not sure if it's a big thing on y'all's radar or not, but the people that live in that area to the east have difficulty getting out, especially for a left turn. And I don't know if there's been any accidents or anything or fatalities. I don't know, because I just drive through there on 1830, but I see people waiting in line, waiting in line, and people taking dangerous risks to get out. And so I know that the city or the Commissioner Court is going to eventually figure something to do, either a signal, whatever. And I just wanted to put in a word that I would hope you would consider a traffic circle around about, because the city of Denton does own all the land within spitting distance, and so ride away shouldn't be an issue. Railroad's right on the west, so you don't have to worry about anything else. So I just want to put that out there. And also, I am a volunteer for Meals on Wheels, so if anybody has any questions from where I stand anyway about corruption and whatever's going on, I'd be glad to answer it. I'll be sitting around for a little while. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. Good. Thank you. Thank you for your comment, sir. All right, let me turn off the timer. All right, we have no other items on item one for public input. Let's go ahead and proceed forward to item 3A, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing Stephen Orozay for his achievement of Eagle Scout. And I bet that's you, young man, right there. This is your big moment. So if you'll come down, we'd love to... Did I pronounce your name right?
Arosi.
Arosi?
Arosi.
Arosi. All right. And it's Stephen?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Well, good. Well, Stephen, we're glad to have you here. Congratulations. This is a court proclamation recognizing Stephen Arosi for his achievement of Eagle Scout. Whereas the mission of Boy Scouts of America is to prepare young men to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of the scout oath and scout law, and scouts achieve their ranking by fulfilling requirements in areas of leadership, service, and outdoor skills. Whereas Stephen began as a Cub Scout in 2016 and continued through February 2021, at which time he joined Troop 366 Frontier Trails District of the Longhorn Council. And after nine years of service, Stephen has now achieved the highest rank of Eagle Scout, which is earned only by the most committed role models in our society. Whereas for Stephen's Eagle Scout project, he built six sensory stations for riders unlimited in Ponder. This facility offers assisted riding for individuals with disabilities, including veterans. The stations provide their riders a simple physical challenge and are thoughtfully painted to stimulate the senses. Whereas during his time with Troop 366, Stephen has held several positions such as quartermaster, patrol leader, assistant patrol leader, senior patrol leader, historian, and OA representative. He's a member of the Order of the Arrow and attended national youth leadership training. He's also earned 27 merit badges. Outside of scouting, Stephen is a part of the International Baccalaureate Program at Denton High School and a water polo team. Whereas the scout law has 12 points, each a goal for every scout. A scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. All the Boy Scouts in the room can recite that. We believe that Stephen exemplifies these points. He is dedicated to serving others through diligence, integrity, and selflessness. And now therefore be resolved that the Denton County Commissioners' Court hereby recognizes and congratulates Stephen Arosi for earning the high honor of Eagle Scout and thank him for his service to our community. We extend our best wishes for continued success and happiness. Done in open court. This is the second day of December 2025 upon a motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Well, I just want to tell you how proud I am that you became an Eagle Scout. I'm the father of two Eagle Scouts, and I can tell you, I've seen firsthand as your parents have, what a great, what a great task before you to get that, to earn all those merit badges and all the details and time it took to do that. So I just want to commend you for that. And I hope, it really develops a civic mightiness in our young leaders, and hopefully you'll continue that. And I trust that you will, and you'll give back to our, your community, our county, and our country in the years to come. So thank you. Thank you. Do you want to talk about your scouting experience at all?
Ooh, that's a long story.
What your favorite thing was, maybe?
I'd say favorite thing, definitely pretty life-changing. Went to Philmont this summer. It's in New Mexico in the mountains. There's a lot of treks you can do through various days and areas of the camp. To the north, you have the more forested areas, and you have the highest point there, Mount Baldy. And then lower, you have, it's a lot flatter, it's a lot hotter. They recently, or rather, 2016 time, they had a wildfire rip through there, so it's still very barren. And we did the longest trek we could. On paper, it was 78 miles, and in reality, it was 122.
Yeah.
On day five, we summited the highest peak in Philmont, and then we traveled down through the wildfire zone. It was the first year you were allowed to travel there without a member of the staff with you for safety. We came around, we started with eight people, and walking in the camp, we had four people. Three of our scouts got injured, and one of the dads wanted to go with his scout because of the severity of his injuries. So I definitely have to say, I was crew leader for that. I definitely can't say that's a, that's a great thing to remember. I was very stressed with all of my scouts leaving and everyone getting hurt, but I definitely think that's a life-changing opportunity, and I definitely recommend doing something similar. Maybe not on part of that, but I think it's definitely a great building exercise. There are times when you're walking through the forest and you're looking around and you realize that you're out here and nothing can touch you, and all your worries kind of melt away. So I'd suggest anyone going into scouts, or maybe even not, doing something that, like that, that really frees you into nature.
That's great.
I think our county judge did that, didn't he?
I did Philmont twice, yes. Yep, and it was a, it was a very memorable experience. Yeah, I did it. I did two treks up there, so it was...
It wore him out.
It did wear me out. I came back with a beard and about 20 pounds lighter, so I need to go back. So anyway...
Stephen, can I ask you, what do you see yourself doing long-term?
I have like three career goals. My big one has always been aerospace engineer. I remember one of the first merit writers I went and did was aviation down at the Lyons Airport. I love how planes work and specifically within aeronautical engineering or aerospace engineering, like ground-level aeronautics, like cars and race cars and all that. I think that's really cool. Something with psychiatry or psychology, I'd love to be able to help people with that. And that's a very in-demand field. And then if those two don't really work out, I'd love to be a biologist and be one of the people who goes and hunts all over the world for endangered species and helps keep our, keep our animals safe.
Wow. You got lots of variety in your career goals. That's wonderful. Best of luck. Yeah.
Yeah.
The only thing is, the psychology will not work on the race cars.
Yeah, unfortunately not.
You'll have to find some humans for that. Thank you. Congratulations.
Do you want to introduce any guests you have with us today?
Yes. So over here, this is my dad. He's an Eagle Scout, too.
Oh, congratulations to you.
Appreciation.
A little bit, little bit of a gap between when we came Eagle Scouts, but he helped me through a lot of it. He got me into scouting. I'm very thankful for him. And that's my mom. She's here. She's helped me. Well, she never pushed me into scouting. She was always a person there driving me, moving her schedule around, and making sure that there was always someone to be my transportation or to help me get something or make time for something else. So...
Well, let's give the mom and dad's a big hand. It doesn't just happen by itself. It really doesn't just happen by itself. It takes supportive family to be part of it. It's very much a family affair. So, well, congratulations. And so we have any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries the案子. Let's give them a big hand.
All right. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Let me go to, we've got some other special guests with us. Let me, let's go down to 13A, 13A, which is to accept and approve, an approval of the Denton County Alternative Dispute Resolution Program, our de-cap quarterly reports for October the 24th through September the 25th, and any appropriate action. And good morning, Dave. How are you?
Good morning, Judge. Commissioner?
Other guests with you today? Camille, hello.
Well, I have the, the, most of our board and Rosa Costlera, who's our executive director here today.
Perfect.
Keeping me straight.
Perfect. Good, good. That's a full-time job.
Absolutely. Takes three of them.
Very good. Did you want to go over any of those reports from, or give a highlight of the program?
Well, I think the, and I sound like a broken record, because we've been here, been doing this for 20 some odd years, but the, we're still taken care of and doing a lot of mediations to get the weight off of our county, county and district courts. We have actually added now JP courts. As some of you are aware, the statute got changed to include them. We're, a long time ago, and I think it was before any of you were on the board, the commissioners looked at that as a separate action, because they are kind of unique judicial actions, shall we say?
Yeah.
And, but we're, we're, we're growing with the times here, and, and so we've, we've added that to our repertoire.
So when did y'all do that? Is that, that's a recent add?
Yes. The statute actually got changed two, three years ago, and I'm probably off on that by a couple of years.
Okay.
The, we didn't add it then because of the, what we had done before with the commissioners and that it wasn't something that you wanted us to cover, and we are, we are under contract with you all. So, but with our last contract offer, which hasn't been signed yet, that is included in there, and, and we're, we're trying to come up with a...
Yeah, because we wanted to make sure that that was in there. Yeah.
It's in there.
Yeah. Perfect. Any members have any que- Any members have any questions? All right, we appreciate, I'll move for approval to accept the report. Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll, we'll be putting your contract extension on a future gen item, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all for being here today. Thank y'all for what you do. Let me, let's go to our public hearings. I wanted to free them up. Let's go to item four A, four A is a public hearing on Tuesday, December the second, twenty twenty-five, consider, approve, deny, or take appropriate action on a zoning change for PD plan development to R four residential estate, medium density, District LRR zero eight two five zero zero one seven, this is property R two six six zero two six, is located in Lake Ray Roberts Plan and Zoning District Number One. Do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
Move to open.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Unanimously, we are in a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the plan, the PD plan development? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the plan development? Hearing none, do we have a motion to close a public hearing?
Move to close.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for the, for the approved action by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item four B, it's a public hearing on Tuesday, December the second, twenty twenty-five, to consider, approve, deny, or take appropriate action for a zoning change from agricultural to R five residential estates district. This is LRR zero nine two five zero zero one A, this is property R five eight eight zero four, is located in Lake Ray Roberts Plan and Zoning Commission, in Commissioner Precinct One, do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
Move to open.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the zoning change from agriculture to R five? Anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to? Hearing none, do we have a motion to close a public hearing?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion for the item?
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item four C, this is a public hearing on Tuesday, December second, twenty twenty-five, to consider, approve, deny, or take appropriate action on the Chisholm Ranch Estates replat. This is lots two R and five R, Block A, this is seven point four one four acres located in Commissioner Precinct One, do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
Move to open.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak related to the Chisholm Ranch Estates replat? Anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of the Chisholm Ranch Estates replat? Hearing none, do we have a motion to close a public hearing?
Close.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you Judge.
All right, we got that done. Let's go ahead and go to five A, approval of bill report, payments from CSCD Community Corrections, TAI Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Fortune, VIT Interest and DA, forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Good morning.
Good morning Judge. I have no changes, recommend approval of the bill reporter as presented.
Perfect. Do we have a motion for approval as presented?
I'm there.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item five B, approval of the twenty twenty-six Denton County Resolution for Participation in the State Inurgent Defense Grant Program.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six A, approval of purchase of Newtonic Storage Equipment from Freeat Data Solutions Incorporated and approved reseller of MX Technology Incorporated in the amount of one million five hundred four thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars and thirty-two cents through the Texas Department of Information Resources DIR Cooperative Contract DIR CPO five six eight eight. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B, approval of renewal of VeriCode SAST, DAST, and SCA software and support from GB Tech Incorporated in amount one hundred fifty-eight thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents through the Texas Department of Information Resources DIR Cooperative Contract DIR CPO five six eight seven.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six C, approval of renewal of Elastic Cloud Security Information and Event Management Tool from GTS Technology Solutions Incorporated in amount of one hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred seventy dollars for the Texas Interlocal Purchasing System Tips Cooperative Contract two three zero one zero five. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six D, approval of purchase of workers' compensation insurance coverage from the Texas Association of Counties Tax Risk Management Pool for the twenty twenty-six and approval to join the tax network of workers' compensation providers, the Alliance, beginning with the twenty twenty-six term.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven A, report for miscellaneous equipment and software services presented for recording purposes only. Okay, we'll check that off. Next is seven B, approval of budget amendment request two, twenty twenty-six one twenty-two for the Public Facilities Department to transfer five thousand eight hundred eighty dollars from Permanent Improvement Fund Unappropriate Contingency to Permanent Improvement Fund Building to allocate funding for the Jail Kitchen Laundry Remodel Project. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials presented, this is presented for recording purposes only, Gustavo.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one promotion in the county clerk, two new hires in the county clerk, two new hires in the district clerk, one promotion in juvenile probation, one new hire in juvenile probation, five new hires in the sheriff's office, all of them detention officer ones, and two new hires in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Perfect, good, thank you. Next is eight B, approval of the creation of a grant-funded Drug Team and Core Program Manager, this is pay grade thirteen in the four hundred sixty-seventh District Court.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
So I know these are grant-funded, I think it's an annual grant, are these grant contingent?
These are the grants that I believe you approved two weeks, two weeks ago.
I guess I'm just wondering, is, are, but are they, are they, are the positions themselves grant contingent?
Yes, sir, we are creating them based on the grant, so if the grant goes away.
Okay, just, just wondering, that's what I was wondering, thank you.
Perfect, do we have a, we have a motion and a second? Any other questions? Thank you for that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And I just think it's good to put on the record that grant-funded positions are grant-funded positions.
Yeah, no, that's.
And so they, so they may or may, I think it's important to say they may or may not be extended if, if the grant is declining or goes away.
Yes.
So next is eight C, approval of the creation of a grant-funded Director of Administration Drug Court, pay grade seventeen in the two hundred eleventh District Court.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight D, consideration approval to proceed with the completion of the compensation study to include the remaining county departments in any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is nine A, approval of the City's Readiness Initiative, CRI Contract HHS zero zero one four three nine three zero 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 four, Amendment Number Four, between the Texas Department of State Health Services Dishes and Denton County for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-six. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You know, I'm going to skip down here, let's go ahead and do fifteen, I mean thirteen D, we do have a lot of guests here, I'm going to go ahead and handle this. This is a, accept and approval of the one, the biennial Denton County SART Sexual Assault Response Team Report into approval of the Board of Appointees for Denton County SART. Would you like to, would anyone like to come and speak to this item? We'd love to hear from you. Good morning.
Have a whole sexual assault response team here.
Good, well, I want to, I want to be able to get y'all in and back to the good work that y'all do.
Thank you, sir. Well, first, I would like to make you aware that we have some appointments to add to the SART team. One of those is Assistant District Attorney Rachel Nichols, who happens to be in a murder trial this week, so she unfortunately couldn't be here. Second is Lily Isham, who is the Sexual Assault Team Coordinator for Denton County Friends of the Family. And third is Sergeant Chris Johnson with Denton Police Department. Afraid to come to the microphone.
Oh, come on, come on.
That's okay.
I say that because we're friends. I also have worked with our Sexual Assault Response Team to put together our biennial report, which was sent to you. It includes everything that's required by code, including the number of sexual assault cases reported and investigated by law enforcement, those filed with the DA's office, how they were disposed, and all of the information about the meetings that we had and things like that. All of that is there for your perusal.
Perfect. Well, we appreciate the good work that y'all do and members, we have an executive session item related to the committee appointments, or do y'all want to hold this item or do y'all? I wanted to get them in and out so they can get back.
Move to approve the members as stated.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and approve. So we have a motion for approval by Commissioner Williams for the gen item. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? Well, I want to thank y'all for what you do.
No, thank you so much.
You help change lives, you're part, you're integral part of what we do here at the county for bringing restitution and bringing people to justice as well, so we appreciate everything that y'all do and I want to thank everybody here that's with a group stand-up, that's part of our, part of the team. Let's give them all a big hand. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you for, yes, everybody, let's give them all a big hand. Don't be bashful, it's okay, it's okay. Thank y'all for what you do in the lives of these individuals and their families, so you're, again, you're, you're part of our, part of our Denton County family, we appreciate all that you do, so. All right, hearing no other, hearing no, go ahead.
I'd just say, this, this is another one of those ones where we wish you didn't have to exist, but because we don't live in a perfect, perfect world, we sure are glad that you do. And thank you for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
Tough, tough job ladies.
Yeah, it's so tough.
Yep, yep. All right, hearing no other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, thank you folks.
And feel free to leave, I totally understand.
Yeah.
You need to get back to the good work you're doing. Okay. Next is ten A, approval of the Swafford Parcel Edition Final Plat, this is Lot One, Block A, this is seven point six zero eight acres located in Commissioner Precinct Four. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is ten B, approval of the G Clark Subdivision Final Plat Lots One through Three, Block A, this is ten point two one nine acres located in Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is ten C, approval of final acceptance of the Indian Trail Reconstruction Project, this is Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve A, approval of the auto report of the Denton County Sheriff's Office Fiscal Year twenty twenty-five, Chapter Fifty-nine Asset Forfeiture Report as required by Article Fifty-nine of the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve B, approval of the Sheriff's Office Fiscal Year twenty twenty-five Equitable Sharing Agreement and Annual Certification Report for the U.S. Department of Justice. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve C, approval of the Memorandum of Understanding between the Denton County Sheriff's Office and United States Secret Service.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we did thirteen A, and then let's go to thirteen B, approval of the request to accept the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Denton Benefit League Grant Award Funds in amount of nine thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars, would Chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? I just want to give a big Denton County shout-out to our friends at the Denton Benefit League all these years, they have been so good to, to the county. It's a wonderful group of ladies who've been real pillars in the Denton community for all these years and, and they've been very kind and generous with our historic preservation efforts and so I want to thank them and we're glad that they meet in our building here and we, and it's good to see them every month. So anyway, we have a motion and a second, any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll, we'll take thirteen C after executive session. Let's go to fourteen A, approval of the one biennial reappointment of Brad Sebastian as Denton County Fire Marshal for a term not to exceed two years with the initial effective date of January the sixth, twenty twenty-two and biennial reappointment effective January sixth, twenty twenty-six required. Number two, require the Fire Marshal to post a bond as required by the Commissioners Court in amount of three thousand dollars, condition that the Fire Marshal will faithfully and strictly perform the duties of the office in accordance with the Texas Local Cup Chapter three fifty-two. The Chair will move for approval. Second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you Brad and we'll, we'll swear you in like I said later if we need to. Next is, we appreciate what you do. Next is fourteen B, approval of the additional funds for the Professional Services Agreement between Denton County, Texas and Teakna Allen Perkins Incorporated for the U.S. Three Seventy-seven North Project from north of Business U.S. Three Seventy-seven East to U.S. Three Eighty at a total cost of nineteen million six hundred thirty-two thousand forty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents with authorization of appropriated funds in an amount not to exceed four million dollars with funding to come from U.S. Three Seventy-seven Trip Twenty-two Judge, order line item nine four seven four five seven nine zero six here, in any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen C, approval of additional funding for the Professional Services Agreement between Denton County, Texas and BGE Incorporated for the Strater Road Project from FM one fifty-six to I thirty-five W and a total cost of three million five hundred sixty thousand thousand two hundred fifty-six dollars with authorization, authorization of appropriated funds in amount not to exceed one million nine hundred seventy-four thousand nine hundred five dollars with funding to come from Straighter Road Trip twenty-two, Precinct four, order line item nine four seven five seven nine nine zero five zero, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? Glad that project is coming along nicely, just, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen D, approval of interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas, and the town of Little Elm, Texas, for the H E B Connector Spiritus Ranch Parkway Project at estimated cost of five million two hundred forty-four thousand, with Denton County agreeing to contribute an amount that shall not exceed five million two hundred forty-four thousand dollars towards satisfactory completion of the project, with funding to come from H E B Road Connector Precinct one, trip twenty-two, order line item nine four seven five nine four nine zero two zero, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen E, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas, and the City of Carrollton, Texas, for the Franklin Road, Frankford Road Project at estimated cost of six million five hundred thousand dollars, with Denton County agreeing to contribute an amount that shall not exceed three million two hundred fifty thousand dollars towards satisfactory completion of the project, with funding to come from the Frankford Road Precinct two, trip twenty-two, order line item nine four seven four three nine nine zero three zero, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen F, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas, and the City of Carrollton, Texas, for the Hebron Parkway Segment four project at estimated cost of twelve million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, with Denton County agreeing to contribute an amount which shall not exceed six million three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars towards satisfactory completion of the project, with funding to come from Hebron Parkway Segment four, Precinct two, trip twenty-two, order line item nine four seven four zero four nine zero three zero, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen G, approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six interlocal cooperation agreement, I C As for Library Services between Denton County, Texas, and one, the Louisville Public Library, two, the Mary Emma Tate Community Library, and three, the Roanoke Public Library. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen H, approval of one, the Administrative Services Agreement between Denton County, Texas, as a member of the Public Employee Benefits Cooperative of North Texas, the P E B C, and Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Texas, a Division of Healthcare Service Corporation, a mutually, mutual legal reserve company, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, and two, the Benefit Program Application, Application to Administrative Services Only Group Accounts between Denton County, Texas, and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas for Continued Administrative, Administration of Employee and Retiree Medical Benefits through P E B C with A S O B P A is attached, incorporation, Incorporated with Administrative Services Agreement as Exhibit four, as requested by the Denton County Human Resource Director and recommended by the P E B C of North Texas, the Chair will move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's go back and do our consensus agenda today, members, are there any items you'd like to pull off the consensus agenda, or a motion to approve as presented?
I'm there.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Our consensus agenda today consists of item two A, approval of the order making appointments and any appropriate action, and item two B is approval of the payroll. Bianca, did I get everything? I got everything, okay, let's go, which is very good, unusual, let's go to item seventeen, which is community updates, uh, we'll start with Commissioner Precinct one.
Thank you Judge, um, just a couple things here, best of luck to the U N T football team as they travel to New Orleans, uh, to continue their path of the American Conference Title Game on Friday, U N T has finally made the ranking of twentieth, uh, which is, uh, in the top twenty-five, which is a huge deal for them, it's been, it's been decades since they've been, uh, anywhere near that top, that high, uh, so yeah, no, congratulations to them, and we'll obviously be fighting for them, along with any of the other high school, uh, teams that are still in the playoffs in Denton County, that's all I've got.
Perfect, good, thank you.
Oh, hey, I'm sorry, one other thing, make sure you che, check on your elderly folks, uh, and keep your animals inside when it's this cold out, to the best of your ability, um, because they don't have the choice, but you have the choice of ownership and the choice of taking care of them, that's all I've got.
Good, very good.
And that doesn't mean ownership of your elderly, that's the dogs.
Yeah.
Just make sure that's clear.
Let us leave it right there.
I can see the headlines.
That's right, you know, the elderly.
Oh there, I was gonna let it go.
Thanks Judge.
Commissioner Falconer.
Thank you Judge, first of all, I just, I wanna, this is an important day, it's my wife's birthday, so, um, I'm gonna say happy birthday to Susan, but we do have a lot of events, it's holiday season, uh, in Precinct two, and so I'll start with Carrollton, we have Santa on the square on the sixth from four to eight, and that is in downtown, uh, Carrollton, Frisco has breakfast with Santa, and that's on that same day, the sixth from eight to noon, Santa's busy lately, um, and that'll be at the Grove at Frisco Commons, and then Mary Main Street, that'll be on the sixth from three to seven thirty at Simpson Plaza, Frisco, Little Elm has a Merry Little Elm Christmas Parade and Tree Lighting, and that is the sixth from five to nine, and that will be at the lakefront, and breakfast with Santa at the Cove on the seventh from, at ten A M. to noon, that'll also be at the Cove, and then Shady Shores has Cookies and Cocoa, and that'll be on the fourth, five thirty P M. at the Town Hall, and the Colony has Legal Aid of North Texas on the fifth from ten to two at the library, and Keep Colony Beautiful, uh, Keep the Colony Beautiful Art Contest, that's gonna be the fifth and sixth at the, uh, Colony City Hall Annex, and, um, that'll be, uh, between, oh, five to seven on the fifth and eleven to one on the sixth, and then Holiday in the Park Festival and Parade of Lights on the sixth from five to eight, that's at Perriman Park, there'll be food trucks and lots of fun there, and then the Colony Christmas Spectacular Light Show, which will be on the sixth from five thirty to ten thirty at Fire Station Number One, that's all I've got.
Perfect, thank you Commissioner Mitchell.
I have Copper Canyon Annual Christmas Event, December the sixth, three to five P M. Clorith has a Christmas at the Commons, December the fourth at twelve to seven P M. Flower Mountain has a Christmas Parade and Parade of Lights and Tree Lighting Ceremony, December the sixth, five thirty to nine. Holland Village has a seventh annual Mcoff, McAlfley, Mercantile, December the seventh at five P, five P M. to seven P M. Lake City's Chamber have a Lake City's Chamber Monthly Luncheon, December the tenth, le, eleven thirty to one P M. Hickory Creek has a, uh, Christmas Tree Lighting on twelve and, twelve five in Hickory Creek. Lake Dallas has Mary on Main Street, December sixth, five P M. to seven P M., meet, meet the Grinch, Santa, Miss Claus, and a monster truck. Louisville has a, uh, Neighborhood Grant Workshop on December the second, which is today, six thirty to seven thirty, also have a Holiday Stroll on December the fifth, five P M. to nine P M. We have the Louisville Huffines Parade on December the third, uh, at one o'clock P M. And have the Will Hearn's Grand Ole Christmas Show, December the sixth at seven thirty P M. at the Louisville Grand Theater.
Gosh, there's two full pages of stuff going on in Precinct four, hold on.
You're busy, busy.
There we go.
It's ready to.
Turns on and turns right back off Bobby.
At one o'clock, uh-huh. Let's see if it stays on here, if that's it, okay. Uh, I think there are Christmas Tree Lightings in every city or municipality in Precinct four. Uh, yesterday was one at Northlake, and it was, is very impressive, um, Argyle is having theirs on December eighth from four to six, uh, then in Bartonville, they have one on the fifth from six to, to eight. Double Oak is having breakfast with Santa, December sixth from nine to eleven. Haslet has Christmas in the Park on December seventh from three to seven. Crum is having a Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony on the fourth at six P M., and they're also having their North Pole Texas Market, December sixth, eleven to nine P M., and something is kind of special there in Crum, they're having their annual Christmas Chili Supper. This is to help, uh, restore the, uh, Crum Train Depot, and so the Crum Heritage Foundation is sponsoring that. New Fairview has breakfast for Santa, Santa's gonna be busy, he has lots of breakfasts all over the place, and, uh, in Pondra, they're gonna have Christmas in the Park, um, the sixth at five thirty. In Roanoke, they're gonna have a hometown holiday that lasts all day on September, pardon me, on December sixth, from twelve P M. to eight P M., they're gonna have Tree Lighting Parade, Petting Zoo, et cetera. In Trophy Club, this is, this is pretty neat, in Trophy Club on December third, from six to ten, they're going to have their la, live nativ, la, live Nativity Production with live music, live animals, and beautiful sin to, to depict, to depict the birth of Christ. Actually, this is December third through the seventh, they do it more than once, and then in Westlake, the Westlake Together Tree Lighting will be on the third at six, so, if you want to see some lighted up Christmas trees, you can go just about any place and any time.
I have one more.
Commissioner Mitchell has one more to add.
I just got a email text that says, uh, Westside Baptist Church is gonna have their men concert on Sunday, the fourteenth, at three P M., and if you've never attended that, it is a wonderful event, there's a young man there that sings in all voices, and, uh, it's a wonderful event, so if you can attend, attend.
Perfect, good, thank you. Well, I want to give a big Denton County shout out to the cheerleaders from Marcus High School and Byron Nelson High School, because they were in, you may have noticed them, they were in the Macy's Day Parade, Thanksgiving Day Parade last week, so a big shout out, uh, to them, and today is Giving Tuesday, and that is, I just want to remind everybody, we have so many generous people here in the county, and that, it's a, Giving Tuesday is a global movement of generosity to give, especially to the local nonprofits around the world, so y'all be, y'all be thinking about that today if you feel so led to help some of our nonprofits, and I want to talk about some grand, uh, the Grand National Championships, congratulations to the Flower Mountain High School and the Marcus High School for ranking in the top twelve of the twenty twenty-five Bands of America Grand National Championships recently held in Indianapolis, Indiana, so congrats to all those kids, and the Flower Mountain High School Band was also recognized for outstanding musical performance and outstanding visual performance. Okay, it's that time of year to get out and support the, our Salvation Army and the great work that they do here across North Texas and the U S, so on Saturday, in accord, in